We're scouts. And yes, there's something around. Well, you are on the corner. I know, so I'm.
We'll go ahead and call our meeting to order. Welcome to the September 7th, 2021 Gilbert Council Meeting. Calling this meeting to order, I would like to ask Councilmember Anderson to please do our invocation.
Our Father in Heaven, we are indeed grateful, Father, for the opportunity we have to be assembled this evening. We're so grateful for the freedoms that we enjoy, especially this freedom to assemble together and to reason with one another. We pray that Thy Spirit will be here amongst us, that we will take that opportunity to reason with one another and to find solutions to issues that affect our lives. Father, we are always mindful of those who are in harm's way, wherever they may be in the world. Please be with them. Please influence the processes, the abilities to rescue and bring them home, to be reunited with loved ones. We're thankful for those that we recognize this evening as team players, most valuable team players here in the town of Gilbert, and we recognize them for their great work and pray that Thou will bless them to continue offering their service to this community. Father, we again thank Thee for this opportunity to be together and pray that Thy Spirit will be here during this meeting, that we will feel Thy influence in all things, and we say this in the name of Jesus Christ. Amen.
Thank you, Councilmember Anderson. If I could have Councilmember Tilke please recognize the scouts that we have in attendance and lead us in the Pledge of Allegiance.
Good evening. Before we begin, I would like to invite our Girl Scouts to come forward. Ladies, you can come right along this way if you want and come on down. Thank you. As they make their way down here, I'm really excited to let you know that they're new in Gilbert. They just moved from Connecticut, right? And so, brand-new troop, and they're gonna help us lead the pledge. Okay, it's down right here. And before we do that, why don't you introduce yourself and give us your troop number?
I'm Kaia, and our troop number is 3626.
I'm Sabrina, and I'm a part of their Girl Scout troop. I just didn't wear my vest.
My name is Mila, and I'm a part of my Girl Scout troop.
Wonderful, thank you, and welcome to Gilbert. And are you gonna lead our Pledge of Allegiance?
What was the fuck? I pledge allegiance to the flag of the United States of America and to the republic for which it stands, one nation, under God, indivisible, with liberty and justice for all.
Thank you very much, ladies. We'll have you go right back that way.
Thank you, ladies, and welcome to Gilbert. We all kind of stood when I said Pledge of Allegiance because we're not used to having scouts. We haven't had scouts in the room for quite some time. I think we had one, one of our last meetings at Town Hall. Now, we would like to ask our clerk to have the roll call, please.
Mayor Bridget Peterson.
Here.
Vice Mayor Jan Kaprowski.
Here.
Councilmember Scott Anderson.
Here.
Councilmember Lauren Hendricks.
Present.
Councilmember Scott September.
Here.
Councilmember Kathy Tilke.
Here.
And Councilmember Amy Yenthis.
Here.
Aquorum is present.
Thank you, Chevalli. We'll move on to presentations and proclamations. This first presentation is for Bicycle Safety Awareness Week, and I'd like to invite Transportation Planner Chris Bridges down to join me, and he will introduce our guests this evening.
Thank you, Mayor and Council. Very happy to be here this evening, so I'm not gonna steal any thunder from the proclamation, so be brief. Bicycling throughout Gilbert is an important part of our transportation network, but equally as important is keeping the citizens that decide to ride their bicycle safe, and it's something that we take a lot of pride in. However, sometimes even with the most proactive planning and engineering, those safety issues sometimes get ignored by folks using the system. But with that in mind, a tremendous partnership opportunity began in 2019 with Donald C. Brace Foundation through the efforts of Mr. Evan Stubert, Stubbert, sorry Evan, and Adam Baugh, who are both here tonight. This unique partnership formed the basis through which bicycle safety awareness and education can be emphasized through all of Gilbert and hopefully generate awareness for people who are using the system. Through their generous donations coordinated by Evan and Adam to the Gilbert Parks and Rec Foundation and town staff then assists implementing projects such as signage, which you'll get to see one here today, some infrastructure improvements, and hopefully some digital marketing and other opportunities. So with that, I'll turn it back to you, Mayor.
Thank you, Chris. I'd like to have Evan Stubbert and Adam Baugh please join me. I'm gonna read a few of the lines from the proclamation as they make their way down here. Bicycle Safety Awareness Week, whereas creating a bicycle-friendly community has been shown to improve citizens' health, well-being, and quality of life, it also aids in growing the economy of the town of Gilbert, reduces pollution, congestion, and wear and tear on our streets and roads, whereas educating and promoting greater public awareness of bicycle operation and safety to reduce crashes and accidents is of the utmost importance to ensure the safety and comfort of all our users. And whereas, Mr. Evan Stubbert, passion for bike safety originated from a prior crash while bicycling along green field roads south of Discovery Park. And whereas, Mr. Evan Stubbert has collaborated with Mr. Adam Baugh and through the Donald C. Brace Foundation has made generous donations to promote bicycle safety and education. And whereas, since 2019, the foundation started, Mr. Evan Stubbert's great-grandfather has donated a total of $85,000 to the town of Gilbert's nonprofit Parks and Recreation Foundation for street signs and other safety measures. And whereas, through these donations, the town of Gilbert has been able to install 89 street signs to date, with an additional 52 signs still to come, on a total of 36 miles of road within the town reminding drivers of the 2000 Arizona law requiring vehicles to always give three feet spacing to bicyclists. And whereas, current projects underway or planned include a pilot project at Gilbert Road and Warner Road consisting of green bike lane paint and signage to raise safety awareness at the intersection, as well as an upcoming digital media marketing campaign for bike safety education. Now therefore, I, Mayor Bridget Peterson, Town of Gilbert, do hereby proclaim the week of September 5th through September 11th as Bicycle Safety Awareness Week in Gilbert with tremendous gratitude of Mr. Evan Stubbert's and Mr. Adam Baugh's generosity and passion for promoting bicycle safety. That is for you. Nice to meet you, Evan.
Appreciate it.
Hi, Evan.
Nice to see you.
Would you like to make a couple of statements, please?
I'm good.
Are you sure?
Yes.
It's almost lawyer speak, Adam. It was almost lawyer speak, Adam, whereas's. Come on, Evan, it's your chance.
All right. I appreciate the opportunity from the mayor in the town of Gilbert. They've been great to partner with and working together to come up with the ideas on bike safety. It's obviously, in no pun intended, a two-way street. Bicyclists aren't perfect, drivers aren't perfect, and so we're very aware of that. And so we're grateful for the opportunity to start with the three-foot signs, and we hope that through the Brace Foundation, which was founded by my grandmother on behalf of my great-grandfather, Donald Brace, to continue to work with the Parks and Rec and fund other projects to hopefully make Gilbert a leading city in the U.S. and hopefully the world in continuing to look at opportunities to incorporate bike safety into the city. So, Adam?
You did a great.
All right, thank you.
Evan, you did a great job, and those are the kinds of partnerships that we relish here in the town of Gilbert, and being able to bring people together to help out with the things that they see have a need here in the community. And we have a couple of signs for you. I don't even wanna attempt to hold them or move them because they're very large and very heavy. We'll take a picture with one of those. Chris, would you like to be in the picture or with Joe with those? Yeah, let's move over here a little bit. There we go. Thank you both. Thanks for all you're doing for our community.
Thank you.
So nice to meet you. Thanks, Evan. Thanks, Adam. Nice to see you. Is, is Bree here? I don't wanna...Bree? Oh, come on down, Bree. So Bree is here to receive her certificate because she participated in the Miss President U.S. competition as a Gilbert student, correct? Is that correct?
I'm not sure.
I think that's right. I think that's right. I think that's right, if I did it right. And her focus was animal rights, and she participated in this competition all virtually because it was all done during COVID. And I was made aware of several months ago, and I sent a video so that when she won for Gilbert, that she got the video. They then sent me a certificate to present to Bree, which I brought to the last meeting and forgot at home tonight. That's what mayors do. They forget things. So I will make sure that we mail that certificate to you, make sure that we get it to you. It was an honor to be able to speak to you through video for your competition, and congratulations for winning that and participating, because I think it's really important that you took time to participate in something like that. Learn more about yourself, learn more about your community, and make yourself a better person at such a young age. I think it's really important. Congratulations. Can we get a photo? Together? We'll step right over here. Come over there. There we go. So I will get that mailed to you, I promise. Okay? Thank you for being here, Bree. Oh, would you like to say anything? No? No? Thank you. Next, we have Staff Member Heather White to present and recognize the 2021 MVP Award nominees and winners for the town of Gilbert.
Good evening. I'm very excited to be here to share and present our 2021 Gilbert MVP Employee of the Year Awards. We had a record-breaking submission period this last year. Even though we all at the town of Gilbert battled through COVID to be able to continue to serve our community in the way that we prefer to and the way that they desire and deserve, we had over 100 employees make time in their busy schedules to nominate some of their fellow peers and employees for MVP. And that's the most nominations that we've actually ever received for this particular grouping of awards. So I just wanna give a little bit of a shout-out to those who made time to nominate over 100 folks. We had an amazing committee of almost 15 employees across our organization who came together and collaborated and whittled the almost over 100 nominations down to 20 finalists and four winners. So, Chevalli, if you can go to the next slide, or whoever's running. Am I running it? Oh, thank you. Clicker. So that gives you a little bit of background, as I just mentioned, and of course, our Gilbert four town values are driven, kind, bold, and humble. So I'm excited to share not only our 20 finalists with you, but also our four winners for the fiscal year. When we look at driven, while you're reading, the value of few words on this slide stand out to me, words like passionate, driven, hungry, and my favorite phrase from this particular value, average doesn't interest us. So when we look at our finalists for driven, they are Amanda Elliott in Economic Development, Dani Skaggs in Fire, Eugene Meha in IT, Ken Snow in Public Works, and Sharon Castrenova in Police Department. And the winner for the value of driven is Dani Skaggs. So Dani, if you can just wait, clap it out, yes? Dani, if you can just wait, along with our other three winners, and we'll have all of you come down at the very end, and you can get your trophies, and we have photo ops for you as well. But congratulations to Dani Skaggs for winning in the category of driven. Dani's been with Gilbert for 14 years, and I know that during COVID, when there were a lot of available shifts, Dani was first to step in and really support his teammates and his peers so that we could continue to deliver critical services to the town. The next value is the value of kind, and as you're reading that, a few words stand out here, inclusive, of course, Gilbert kindness. It's one of the things that makes Gilbert great. Also, we put people first, and we treat people with respect and civility. When we think about those finalists that represent the value of kind, they are Anna Rowe in General Counsel, Don Perry in Fire and Rescue, Allison Ferentz in Courts, Pauline Henshaw in Public Works, and Rachel Fields in Fire and Rescue. And the winner for the value of kind is Pauline Henshaw. Clap it out for Pauline. Pauline's been with our organization for 22 years, and I know she attacks every day with a big smile and takes care of us so that we can take care of our great community. Moving on to the value of bold, one of my personal favorites, because words like innovation and curiosity and creativity stand out here. When we think about those who, over the last year, have shown up in very bold ways within our organization, the finalists are Brenda Carrasco in Digital Government, Jacques Trigg in Police Department, and I might have not said that exactly right, so forgive me, Jonathan Sorrells in Public Works, Katie Matusik on the People Team, and Tyler Nitzel in Finance and Management. And the winner for the value of bold is Brenda Carrasco in Digital Government. Our digital media team on digital government obviously has always been busy, but they were particularly busy this last year with COVID and being able to get information out and support our community. So congratulations, Brenda. And last, but most definitely not least, our value of humble. This particular value really talks to what Gilbert is all about, because you can read that service is at the heart of everything that we do. We're advocates of servant leadership, and we find success in supporting others by using authenticity and collaboration. When we think about humble at Gilbert, in this last year, the finalists are Dior Chapman in Finance and Management, Jenica Horta in Parks and Rec, Laura Lorenzen in Management and Budget, Nicholas Baldelli in Finance and Management, and Robert Kropf in the Town Manager's Office. And the winner for the value humble is Robert Kropf. Robert's been with us for nine years. So congratulations to our four winners. If I can ask for Robert, Dani, Pauline, and Brenda to come on up, or down, I should say? Come on down. I always wanted to say that. And we are going to present you with your trophies. Patrick, do you wanna do that? I know how you love pictures.
Hi. Congratulations. Oh, that's my fault. Don't listen to him.
Pauline's on her way. Congratulations, Robert. Congratulations, Dani. Brenda, congratulations. And congratulations, Pauline. Thank you all for your amazing contributions, not just last year, but in years past, and thank you for everything that you're going to do go forward to support our Gilbert community, both internally and externally. We appreciate you. Congratulations to our 2021 MVPs. Thank you, and thank you to Kristin for handing those out.
Congratulations to those winners. I think Team Gilbert's a great team to be part of, and to be able to focus on four people each year that have made a big difference over the past 12 months in this organization is just an amazing way to thank them, and these people work hard for us every single day to keep this town running. Thank you, Heather, for your presentation. I will now move on to communications from citizens and turn this over to the Vice Mayor.
Thank you, Mayor. The communications from citizens portion of our agenda provides citizens an opportunity to identify for the town council matters of interest or concern related to town government that are not on the printed agenda. Under the provision of Arizona Open Meeting Law, the council is prohibited from responding to issues that are not properly noticed on the agenda, but we are here and we are listening. We regret that we cannot respond beyond thanking you for your comments. When I call your name, please make your way to your right, come down to the podium, state your name and place of residence, and begin speaking. Each speaker will have three minutes. All speakers are expected to observe common standards of decorum and courtesy. We'll begin with Omar Hamid, followed by Kristi Kuhn and Debbie Kuhn. Yes, please.
Thank you for giving me the opportunity to come here today. By the way, it's a beautiful facility, first time here, I'm really, really impressed. Other than the logo outside, I'm really impressed with the building, so. Be very brief. You know, Dennis McDonough was the Chief of Staff under President Obama. Now imagine for a minute if President Trump took office, like he did four years ago, and Dennis McDonough was his Chief of Staff. Now imagine President Biden, who is now elected, and his Chief of Staff is Mark Meadows from the Trump administration. That's essentially what we have here. Now, I'll give you another example. You, we all know the country of Israel. They have a Prime Minister, and they have a symbolic leader called the President. Now, the Prime Minister does most of everything. He is duly elected, but I just get the feeling that at town of Gilbert, we have it opposite. We have the leadership, which is more symbolic, and the town manager and everybody works under him, does whatever they wanna do as long as they placate and be nice to the leadership rather than listen to the citizens. So, I'm here, my call of action tonight is maybe if you had a new town manager who actually worked with the citizens beforehand, instead of trying to secretly pass something and then having it looked quickly by the town council and moving forward. One last thing, and I'll leave you guys alone. Since you've been elected Mayor Peterson, instead of coming to the meetings every two weeks and doing the people's business, you've been hammered by people like us... you've been hammered by people like us trying to complain and, you know, take all your precious time. Again, this problem would quickly go away if we had the right leadership in the town management. Thank you.
Our next speaker is Kristi Kuhn and Debbie Kuhn. They have separate cards, Patrick.
Hi, I'm, I'm, um, we're not understanding very well. Can you understand me better now? Because I didn't hear half of what my neighbor said. But I don't know if it's the mic or what. I'm Debbie Kuhn, this is Kristi. I'm gonna go first. So it's been really nerve-wracking, heart-wrenching, really stressful. I, I just, you know, I've lived, we've lived in our home for 28 years, and we built it in hopes and dreams that we would get to be there the rest of our lives. And it's, it's, it is our dream to have a barn with horses and to be able to go out the back gate. And I'm getting where I can't lift the heavy things. So it helps a lot to have a feed truck to be able to, to deliver heavy things like bales of hay and 80-pound bags of horse pellets. And it also is a big deal for me to be able to go out of our back gate to, to walk, you know, to be able to ride just right back out there. And have a vet come if we're in trouble. And I've had horses pass away over this long period of time that we've been there. And it's, it's been good that children and people haven't had to see a dead horse or to get it out a gate. So also, just to, it's, it's been great therapy for my daughter who has autism. I don't know what I'm gonna do if, if you guys plow into our backyard and take my barn. And will I even be able to have horses again? These all uncertainties, especially during this time of unrest and quarantine and, and being separated from people. It's been really comforting to have our animals with us that we're just so used to. And we just, we don't know. And it's so unbelievable that I'm at your mercy, that my, my, our lives, our welfare is at your choice. And I know there's needs, but we've given options. We've given better options, way cheaper options, to do whatever it is you guys need to do in back of our, our homes there. There's lots of room. And I just hope that, that it's, and pray, you know, that you're gonna not only make a wise choice, a financial choice, but also the right, the right choice for all of us. And I thank you for serving, and I thank all of you who, who, to care. And thank you.
Okay, so I've heard like ever since last April or May that we have this land grab going on in Gilbert, and some, and some people are planning to take, waste our tax dollars in order to have more land, take, to take, and it's not fair for them to take away the people's backyards behind their neighborhood so that they could have more freedom for a irrigation pipe. And when we looked on the map, it was not perfectly straight. It was like going like this way and that way and zigzag. And, well, and it leads even to the back of our barn. And, well, if they take away our barn, then we don't have any freedom to ride our horses out back to the canal and around to Freestone Park. And Mom and Dad will have to find some other way to feed our horses, or we may have to board our horses someplace else and maybe raise our chickens someplace else. And I also heard that somebody also wants to build go-karts, a go-kart arena.
That's not our problem.
That's our problem.
Do you have anything else?
Let's see. Yeah, people do need their own backyard so that they can have more freedom to own a shack or own a pool or something, their own backyard. It won't be fair just to take away people's property just because there's a land grab or we have to do something about irrigation. Pipe needs to be, you know, more exposed of. Yeah, sewer. It's a sewer pipe that, that people are wanting to, you know, get more access to. And it's, it won't be fair for the people, neighborhood areas, just to give up their backyard so to make things happen. And ever since COVID, you know, take part of our lives since 2020, everything's been hectic. The news has been hectic. And horses every day, too.
Well, thank you. Thank you for listening to us. And that is her, pretty much her full-time job. She cleans, she feeds, she, she grooms, so.
I feed the horses.
Thank you.
Thank you. That concludes our Communication from Citizens, and we'll move to the Consent Calendar. We have requests to discuss and vote separately on items eight, 10, 12, and 17. Yes, eight, 10, 12, and 17. May I have a motion to approve Consent Calendar items four through seven, nine, 11, 13 through 16, and 18 through 23? So moved.
Second.
Please vote. What is your vote, Mayor?
My vote's yes.
Passes unanimously. We'll move on to item number eight. Councilmember Yentes?
Thank you, Vice Mayor. This is a contract I haven't supported in the past and for, for similar reasons I've stated before. And I don't generally support contracts of similar organizations, partially because some of these monies, because money is fungible, ultimately goes to activities that aren't directly within the scope and benefit of the town, in my opinion, specifically to take positions at the legislature that I think are contrary to taxpayer interest. So ask permission to vote separately on this item.
Thank you. Are there any other comments on item number eight?
Yes, on item eight? Yes, so last year, we went through this. Every year, we vote on whether or not to fund GPEC. And GPEC provides additional support to our Economic Development Team here in Gilbert in bringing businesses to the community. And so this year, I saw it again on the agenda. And so I just asked briefly to our Economic Development Team, you know, what can we really attribute this $130,000 that we're gonna pay to be a member of GPEC? What, what is it worth? What's the value? And there, there are a lot of components to this that are difficult to quantify, but there are some that are easier to quantify. And what they shared with me is that in the last five years, that by being a member of GPEC, they brought about 2,300 jobs to Gilbert. And the businesses that they brought to Gilbert occupy over 400,000 square feet of office space in our town. That generates tax, tax dollars. And I, I thought that was fairly, fairly significant. Companies like Morgan Stanley and Deloitte and many other smaller and mid-sized firms. So I, I'm okay. I would support this for another year.
Thank you. Could we get a motion to approve item number eight?
I'll move to approve number eight.
Second.
Please vote. That passes five to two. We'll move to item number 10. Councilmember Tilke?
Thank you, Vice Mayor. I would ask that we talk about item 10 and 17. I've asked Jason or someone from his team to come and talk about these two issues. As you're aware, the Western Canal has several projects that the neighbors are very concerned about. And I wanted just to make sure that we're very public in providing them an update on where we are and what this action is gonna be tonight if we, if we pass it. And so I don't see anybody walking down, but is he online?
Yes, I am, Councilmember. Can everybody hear me okay?
Thanks, Jason.
So, good evening. Item number 10 is a pre-construction services contract with Archer Western Construction to support projects WW 1060, WW 1246, and WA 1546. The project team is currently underway on a combined corridor analysis to evaluate alternatives for the 36-inch sewer, 24-inch potable water, and 18-inch reclaimed water along the Western Canal from Lindsay Road to Gilbert Road. The analysis will develop numerous alternatives for the corridor and include significant evaluation and feasibility analysis by all stakeholders to include SRP, town water, wastewater, and our C Mar. The C Mar will complete constructability reviews, detailed cost estimates, stakeholder collaboration, and participate in public meetings and town council presentations. Due to the volatility in the construction market, a significant portion of this contract is allocated to detailed cost models from the C Mar to assist in the decision-making process. Within this contract are also numerous town-controlled allowances to complete an updated condition assessment of the 36-inch sewer pipeline, a condition assessment of the 18-inch reclaimed water pipeline, and pothole existing utilities to provide data in support of the alternative analysis. This contract will be built on a not-to-exceed time and materials basis, with any unused funds returning to the town if not required for the corridor analysis effort. At the conclusion of the corridor analysis, it's anticipated that an ultimate scope for all three projects will be defined. At that time, it's necessary to complete a change order to this pre-construction services contract to provide the effort necessary to assist with a more focused design effort for the ultimate scope for any combination of the three CIP projects. So that is a brief overview of item 10. I can go into item 17 unless there's some specific questions for item 10.
Jason, is item number 17?
What was that?
Is item number 17 related to item number 10?
It, it is related. There's a connection between the two.
Could you review that item as well, please?
I will. So item 17 is approval of a contingency transfer and construction phase number two with Aiken Gardner Construction for project WA 1546. As described, this project is completing immediate improvements and condition assessment on five miles of 48-inch, 36-inch, and 24-inch transmission main from the North Water Treatment Plant to Cooper Road along the Western Power Line Trail and Western Canal, which includes that segment where we're completing the corridor analysis from Lindsay Road to Gilbert Road. Immediate improvements proposed are replacement of valves and providing access points for current and future assessment efforts. Once this pipeline is shut down, the assessment will take place and investigate the condition of the pipe with a final report summarizing the findings and identifying future rehab or replacement efforts to allow for long-term planning. The condition assessment also provides critical information to assist with the corridor analysis being completed from Lindsay Road to Gilbert Road along the Western Canal, which is associated with CIP project WW 1060. Assessment of the 24-inch pipeline along this segment is anticipated to be complete by the end of 2021. Those results will be provided to the WW 1060 design engineer for incorporation into the alternatives analysis. We are also holding a project discussion tomorrow evening with the residents along the Western Canal from Lindsay Road to West Aburk Street to provide a summary of the activities associated with this contract and how it connects to WW 1060 efforts. Are there any questions on those two items?
Mayor, Vice Mayor, Jason, it's my understanding that the timeline that we had presented earlier and that the residents had, that these contracts actually keep us on track for that timeline. This isn't anything that's gonna extend that timeline, as far as you know.
That is correct, Councilmember. These will fall right in line with the schedule that's been shared with council and with the public.
Thanks, Jason. Also, I appreciate that you're gonna be meeting with the neighbors and so that you can have some more comments as you go forward. Anyway, I just wanted to make sure that we took time to publicly just talk about what this is and as we move forward. So with that, I'll make a motion to approve item number 10 and 17.
Second.
Please vote. The motion passes unanimously. We'll move on to item number 12. Councilmember September?
Thank you, Vice Mayor. So I pulled this one just to, just to mention this, to give visibility to the public or anybody who may not be familiar with our purchasing and our Fleet Services side. I think this is a group that works very hard but gets very little exposure or recognition, because these are things that just happen as a part of a town. And I, I saw this, this is a pretty big number here. That's several million dollars that we're getting ready to spend on vehicles and different assets that have a lifespan that's finite. And so I was talking, I wanted to talk to Fleet, and I talked to purchasing today. Then this process starts with when we purchase a new vehicle or any asset, we assign a lifespan to it. And so it's given a life cycle and a finite date. And what happens is when these assets get close to the end of their life cycle, their forecasted life cycle, our fleet team will request that the vehicles be delivered to their inspection station. And they get inspected. We, they look at the maintenance history. They look at what maintenance a vehicle might need at that time. And then they forecast what, what maintenance these vehicles might need in the near future based on their experience with them. And then decisions are, decisions are made of which vehicles should be replaced, which vehicles have reached their useful life. And that information goes up our executive team. It eventually goes through our finance and accounting teams. And then our purchasing manager, Jim Campion, will then take that, and he works closely with Lee Topic on Fleet. And he has to then investigate all of the different cooperative purchasing contracts that we have. And we have, there's many. They're nationwide, some of them. And so these documents all have to be scrubbed through to see where the Town of Gilbert can derive the best pricing and have the most purchasing power. And it's, these are really long processes. The Fleet review, that takes three months. That started six months ago. And then by the time it gets to purchasing, Jim has another three months to pull together his piece. And it's just, it's a heavy lift. It's a lot of work to make sure that Gilbert is getting the most for their money and that Gilbert is using the assets and the resources we have to their fullest. And so I just want to thank Jim Campion and his team, and Lee Topic and all of his team for keeping those up and running. And also finance and our OMB folks for, for supporting that. But that's what I wanted to raise this. I think it's important and something that people know very little about, and I was one of them until earlier today. Thank you.
Thank you, Councilmember September. May I have a motion to approve item number 12?
So moved.
Second. Please vote. That motion passes unanimously, and that concludes our consent calendar. Mayor Peterson?
Thank you, Vice Mayor Kaprowski. Moving on to our public hearing items, we have three items on our public hearing agenda this evening, two liquor license and one zoning that has been requested to be continued to the October 19th, 2021 council meeting. I will go ahead and open the public hearing. Do we have any requests to speak?
We don't have any requests to speak, but we have James Burke here on item number 25, if needed.
On 25, oh, if needed, okay. Would anyone like to pull any of those items off to discuss separately or have a presentation? Seeing none, I will go ahead and close the public hearing and bring it back for a motion. Anybody?
I'll make a motion to approve the public hearing. I'll make a motion to approve the public hearing items 24, 25, and 26.
Second. Passes 7-0. That was a motion by Councilmember Tilke and seconded by Vice Mayor Kaprowski. I'm out of practice with that because we've been doing it differently, and I didn't think about it. Thank you. Now we'll move on to our administrative items. Number 27, council administration can consider acceptance of the budget report and contingency report for the fourth quarter of FY 2021. Is anyone presenting any one thing on that? The budget?
I'm sorry, ma'am.
Item number 27, the budget report. Are we having a report on that? No?
We are not, Mayor, no. But happy to answer any questions that may be on it.
Excuse me?
Happy to answer any questions anyone may have on it.
Anyone have any questions or comments? Take a motion if anybody would like to make one?
I'll make a motion to approve number 27.
Thank you. Second?
Second.
I have a motion by Councilmember Tilke and a second by Vice Mayor Kaprowski. Please vote. Next, boards, commissions, and committees. Any reports from council liaisons? No. We will move on to, well, we have no policy items. Future meetings, communications. A report from the Town Manager on current events.
Thank you, Mayor. Members of the council, I just wanted to thank all the employees who took the time to nominate their peers for our MVP awards. Certainly congratulate everyone who was nominated, the finalists, and of course, our winners. They're all very fine employees and very grateful to work with them and serve as to this community. Thank you.
Thank you, Patrick. Any reports from council on current events? Seeing none. Report from the mayor on current events. I'd like to make sure that you're all aware that on Saturday, November, excuse me, September 11th, I just pushed us ahead two months, September 11th, we will be having the 20th anniversary ceremony for the 9/11 memorial at Town Hall at 50 East Civic Center Drive starting at 6:00 PM. Please come and join Gilbert Fire and Rescue and the Police Department as we remember the lives lost and pay tribute to the brave first responders who answered the call on September 11th, 2001. The ceremony will be followed by a tribute in light from 7:30 PM to 10:30 PM. Two beams of light will be projected into the sky to symbolize the World Trade Center's Twin Towers. If you've never been to that memorial, there is a piece from Tower One, a beam from Tower One that was transported here by our retired fire chief and our current fire chief about 10 years ago. It's a great ceremony, and I encourage everyone to please attend. That's all I have for current events. We will go ahead and recess our regular meeting and reconvene in the executive session. Thank you all.